Richa Sands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. First, our next item on the agenda are presentations, and we have Gay and Blair here to talk about Edgystaff. Thank you for being here.
I'm going to speak about Edgystaff, and so thank you for having us this evening. I'm Blair Baumgartner. I'm the Indiana District Manager for Edgystaff.
I'm Gay Williams, and I'm the Territory Manager for Edgystaff. And so I head up the Indiana District, and I've been down here since 2017.
Yeah. So without further ado, pardon me if I'm a little loud. Sometimes my voice carries. So in 2022, and Gay was here, I've been on board for a little over a year now, took over Gay's position. Now Gay is my direct supervisor. But in 2022, when we started partnering with Whitley County, there were forty-eight subs, substitute teachers that came that were on board at that time. Now, in 2025, at the end of this year, we have one hundred and seventy-six active subs that are with Edgystaff. And so, I guess I'll explain, one hundred and seventy-three approved. The three in process are, I'm sure, come through now. But we, so we essentially have one hundred and seventy-six subs with Edgystaff now that are with Whitley County.
The sixty-seven that imported are applicants that we get them through. Once they're imported into our system, they go into process, which is the three that are in process. And that's where we go over requirements and making sure that they have everything. Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted, and we have the information, background checks, transcripts, sub permits, that kind of stuff to approve them to work in the district.
So this just gives you an idea as far as the substitute pool, out of the subs that we had approved here, how many worked this year? So we had one hundred and seventeen subs that worked this year, which actually is really pretty good overall compared to other school districts. We had a pretty, a pretty healthy percentage of the subs that worked this year. You want to maybe add anything to that?
Just generally, when you're looking at a sub pool, like if it's a hundred subs in a sub pool, you're lucky if you have fifty of them work at all. And usually, a lot of them nationally, the biggest percentile of subs that work, eight percent work one day out of the whole year. Fifty percent of the sub pool only works twenty-five days or less. On average, subs only sub forty-one days out of the school year. Your numbers are obviously higher than that. And we get subs that complain that they want to sub here and there's nothing available.
Yeah, it's a nice problem to have. I can say that this is the only school district I have where I literally have substitute teachers that are like, the spots fill up too quick, so quick here that they're like, I want to work Whitley County, but all the spots have been filled already. So, which says a lot about, honestly, about your leadership, says a lot about the school district as a whole, says a lot about your students and everyone involved with the school district. So, I mean, definitely, definitely a flagship school district from our standpoint as far as partnering with you. I mean, it's been nothing, but it's been a pleasure to partner with you and, and really been great. So last year, we brought sixty-three substitute teachers on board. The prior year was sixty-four. Prior year, when we first started, it was forty-seven. So we've, we've amped that up a little bit and been pretty consistent as far as the number of substitute teachers that we brought on board. So if you look at the national, regional, and state fill rates, so each year in the United States, it's six hundred thousand substitute teachers that cover over thirty million teacher absences in K through twelve schools. The direct correlation between the high fill rate, there's a direct correlation between the high fill rates and student achievement, as you would expect. Nationally, less than one percent of phone calls actually fill assignments. The pre-pandemic national fill rate was about eighty percent. Now it's between sixty to seventy percent monthly and sixty-four percent for the school year nationally. So you would think it'd be higher, but nationally, they only fill about sixty-four percent on average of spots across the board. The Midwest average is seventy-seven percent, so it's a little higher. And the Indiana average is higher, it's seventy-five percent. This is where Whitley County comes into play. So this past year, we filled ninety point seven three percent of all vacancies for certified teachers, which is the highest of any school district I have. I have five different school districts here in the state. It's, it's, bar none, it's the best, it's the best out of all my school districts. So that also speaks to, I think, the partnership we have with Whitley County and the leadership and, and everyone that's involved that really makes us work. So.
And we're always striving. We're not going to say, oh, we're at ninety, almost ninety-one percent. We're good, we're golden. We're not doing that. That's not how we operate because we always want to improve it. The more our subs work, the better it is for the students, and that's why we're all here. This is what we do. And with your leadership that we've used, they are very on board. They know everything that we're doing with subs. Any, any issues that come up or any decisions that need to be made, leadership is on it right away with us, or they'll tell us, hey, we need to have this, or can you do this? Or we have a teacher leaving early because they, we thought they were going to be on maternity leave in a month, and they have to start maternity leave now. And they're great about that communication with us and what we can do to help them. It's a true partnership. It's not, you guys are our client, the students are also our client, so it's a very true partnership there. But we love the leadership here at Central Office for us. They are great working with us. As a matter of fact, when we did our end of the year presentation and we were talking about subs, this was the only district, and I have other states, so I also have Missouri and Wisconsin. So this is the only district in the end of the year meetings that said, hey, is there anything else we can do for the subs? We want to keep the subs happy. No other district has asked us that. None of them have ever even broached that subject. So I want you guys to be aware of how well that your central office functions and where that their hearts are at and where their attitudes are at with us, because that's their first thought is, how can we help your subs so your subs can do better in the classroom? What can we do for the subs? Not just the employees. And that's nice, because most subs complain about feeling like they're, they don't belong to the district. It's hard for them to get help for something, or they're looked down, and we don't have that issue here, which is perfect.
Yeah, we, I can, I can say that we absolutely do not have that issue here, which is fantastic. It makes it a lot easier for everyone, too. This is just the same information, but it just shows a graph there of, of the fill rates. Last year, we were eighty-six point four six percent, and we, we increased that to ninety point seven three percent this year. So that was, that was great. Hopefully, we'll get it a little bit higher next year. We'll see. But we're pretty happy with nine out of ten spots being filled on a, on a daily basis. This just gives you a little snapshot about our marketing. I mean, we, half of it's word of mouth. We go, we're very active, though, with, with radio, internet, billboards, job fair events, social media. And we get out and then put our banners, our yard signs, and business cards out there, too, as well. And this is a partnership as well. A lot of times, like, I, I can't tell you how many times this past year I went to, like, you know, let's say Little Turtle Elementary or at school within the district, and the secretary is like, oh, I just found another, two more people that want to substitute teach, and it's great. Because a lot of times, there's people that are involved with their, their kids are in the school corporation already, and they want to be involved with the district. And so the buy-in's there, right? I mean, they have that full buy-in, and they, they genuinely care about the students. I mean, obviously, it's all about quality. We want people that really, really care about the kids and that are competent and that really want to invest in the students, and that's really what it comes down to. So these are just some examples of some of our marketing material. I won't really go over that too much. It just kind of gives you an example of some of our, our material there. So this, this, we did an end of the year survey every year, and this is the, the feedback we received from the substitute teachers in Whitley, that, that work at Whitley County. This is their experience with Edgystaff. So you'll see, five is exceptional, sixty-five percent said exceptional, more than acceptable was four, that's twenty-six percent. So ninety-one percent either said exceptional or more than acceptable. And then we had five percent at acceptable and only four percent that were less than acceptable. So that was really good. And you'll see that the, the subs' experience with the district's almost exactly the same as it was with Edgystaff. The subs from this district said that, we had eighty-five percent that said it was either exceptional or more than acceptable. Ten percent said acceptable, only five percent said less than acceptable. So that was excellent. Nationally, the, the, it's forty-seven percent would say exceptional. That's the national average. And this far, this far and above of the national average. So definitely doing better overall than, by far than the national average.
So when we're talking national with Edgystaff, just be aware, we're talking fourteen states and eighty-three thousand employees. So we send it out to every employee group that we partner with, with districts. Some of them are coaches, custodial, food service, maintenance, IT, you name it, just depends on what districts need, we do that. So we have eighty-three thousand employees. So I call us the little big company, because we're, we're, we make the Forbes list every year, which is great that we have that, and it's great that Edgystaff is set up this way. But also, you can see we're boots on the ground. We're down here. Blair lives locally. I live in the Fort area during the week. And then, I'm not going to lie, I go home to Michigan, Midwest farmer's daughter up there. But regardless, we're down here, we're in the districts, we're working. He's from this area. He was originally one of my subs for a couple of years. When the position opened up, I said, my company says, who do you think? And I'm like, well, there's Blair. And then my HR director said, Baumgartner? We have already got this. I'm like, okay, we're done. We don't need to, we're just completely happy here. But we did, she's like, no, we have to do other interviews. And then we finished the last interview. She's like, okay, Gay, you're set. So I was very thankful for that. But just understand how big we are when we send this out. You're getting that many responses back. So it's not just a little bit. It's not just a few people in Indiana that are sending us this. It's, it's national.
Yeah. And, and, yeah, we, I mean, main thing we wanted to do coming in here today, and we, again, really appreciate you giving us the time to talk. And we know time's limited, so we were, we're going to wrap this, this up here. But we're very, very happy and satisfied and thankful for the partnership we have with Whitley County. And we can't say enough about top-down leadership. Incredible, very hands-on, very responsive. And I think it's a testament to every, to everyone on the board as well, to, to all of you. So thank you for, for letting us come in and, and, and speak. If you have any further questions, I, you know, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And our subs in the survey literally have said to us, with Whitley County, we feel like we're heard in your district. We feel like building admin has our back if there's a behavioral issue or whatnot. And they're like, that's not an issue. And I'm going to tell you right now, as a semi-retired educator, nobody is subbing to get a paycheck. Let's put that out there. You're going to make more in riches in terms of what you're getting back from the students, and that's the people that we want to sub, and that's who are coming in. That's the enrichment part of it. Nobody's doing this to get rich. If you think about it in education, my husband would call it my volunteer position. Because the money I'd make, I'd buy stuff for the classroom, all right, have a needy child. So please be aware of that, too, that we want these types of subs in here working. We don't want them in here for a paycheck. That's not what we stand by with Edgystaff. Our motto is servant hood through excellence and wholeheartedness. And we want them to take it into the classroom. And your central office staff also pushes that down into the buildings. And our relationships with the principals in the buildings, too, have all been great. And I can't, I, I, we can't talk enough about how well your district is doing on that, on that aspect of it, with the students, making sure that they're getting what they need.
I have a question. And I'm glad to hear we have, our community really supports and it comes through, it's parents and grads and things. Do you award, do any kind of awards for maybe some of the, the, because I know in this district, there's a person I know of, he was subbing all the time, and maybe he was putting in hours, because I have two fantastic names. One, the Substantial Educator Award. I think that's fantastic. And then the Sublime Service Award. Was this two I came up with? I was thinking, maybe we could award them somehow as being, you know, the person that subbed the most or, or.
Right. We also do that at Edgystaff. We have an excellence award that we give out. And then there's a Sub of the Year for Indiana. You, and Whitley County, you had it last year.
Bob Schneider, yeah, Bob was in the Sub of the Year last year. He subs a lot at Whitley County. And then, yeah, every, every semester, or every, you know, semester, fall and the spring, we'll, we'll have a, for each district, we'll have a, a sub, a sub for that, for that particular semester called Edgystaff Excellence, Excellence Award. But I like, I like your names. Maybe we'll have to consider, like, I changed them. Those are good.
I really like the Sublime Service Award. It has a great title.
Yeah, no, those are good.
If you want to award subs as well, too, we're okay with that. There's no, like, there are subs, you can't do that. That's not true. We're okay with that. So with the Excellence Award, too, and even with the, the Teacher of the Year, we ask if they would like to do, be awarded in front of the board, and Bob did last year. He wanted it, and his, and when I called Bob, it was so cute. And I said, I said to him, I said, is Julie there? It's his wife. I said, is Julie there? And she's in the background going, yeah, Gay, I'm here. And I'm like, okay, Bob, are you close to a seat? And he's like, oh, no, are you firing me? That's the first thing. And I just said, no, I just want you close to a seat, just in case. And I said, I'm so sorry to tell you this, Bob, but you were awarded the Substitute of the Year for the State of Indiana. And then the next thing I heard is him falling into that seat. And his wife was telling me, she was saying, oh, my goodness, this is great. The guy was crying on the phone to me, which is, that's the reaction you want, is the guy is crying on the phone to me. And, you know, he's a big burly guy, no offense, Blair, but, you know, he, to have that kind of reaction, and then his wife, I gave him the options, and he's like, oh, yeah, we can just present it. I can go pick it up at Central Office. And his wife was like, no, we're going to do it in front of the board. We're going to have your kids there. We're going to have your grandkids there, because we want to see this. So we do option, usually excellence awards, they don't necessarily want to do it. But with the Sub of the Year, we do do that and award them.
Yeah. Yeah, we had, we had a, the first excellence award this year is Jenna Sully, and then I think she's a permanent, or last time I knew she was, at least for a time, she's a permanent employee of the school district. She, which is pretty common, quite frankly. A lot of times, we'll have Edgystaff employees that end up becoming permanent employees of the school district. So that's within our school district, so.
And what's unique with Edgystaff with that, too, is we're a great funnel for you to look at, especially for long-term assignments and whatnot. We don't get paid unless our subs are in that classroom working. We don't make any money. Also, when they hire a sub, doesn't matter if they've only been our employee for one day or for one year, they just call me up and say, hey, Gay. And it's usually Lori who does that. We're hiring that sub. We're taking your sub. And so alls I do is send background check, sub permit, transcript on over to Lori and HR. They handle it from there. They're not buying out a contract or anything. We just give you the subs. But it also works good for long-term assignments, too, because they don't have to offer that teacher the position first. They can try and see if they're a good fit in the district and/or a good fit in that building. So that's what works well with Edgystaff, which is a unique thing. Do you have a question?
No, I was coughing. But, but I will make a statement. You know, we look at our team, and we have an amazing team here. And, and we see that evident across the district, and, and subs are a part of the team and a critical part of the team, because, you know, my wife was a teacher for a number of years. And if you didn't get the right sub in there, you lost a day. And in today's environment, you can't lose days. And so you fill those days and help our students achieve the best they can. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And also, because they're our subs, they're our employees. If any of the buildings have an issue with our sub, they let Central Office know. They fill out a form. It's called an EPF, an Employee Performance Form. That sub can get just a written warning. That sub can get excluded from a building, or that sub can be excluded from the district. No questions asked. So it's, it's nothing that you actually falls back on the district for any of that.
Thankfully, that doesn't happen too often either. It's very, very, it's pretty rare.
Honestly, I think we've only had in three years, maybe two that I can think of. Is that right, Dr. Laura? About two. She knows all, she's on top of everything that goes on with our, our subs and, and, and filling absences and whatnot. And sits in on meetings. We do quarterly meetings with the district and, and everything, so that she has all that information as well, which is great. We, sometimes we see superintendents that just wave at us. They're not very hands-on. She's very hands-on. And I would say, out of all of our districts, she's actually the most hands-on superintendent that we have that is involved in everything that happens with the subs and else, which is very, it's actually very comforting and nice to know, because you have the right person in there looking out for the students. And that's really important to us. Any other questions? If not, we're going to.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for being here.
There you go. Thanks, Seth. Yeah.
Do you want to hear a lap?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Radio Road Building Project. I know we're excited to hear about that, and Steve Parks will be presenting that. Steve Parks and his.
Jeff Tappy. Yeah, I'm very excited to be here tonight. This is an exciting project for us and for you, I know. I'm going to give kind of a little bit of an introduction, and Jeff's going to kind of run through the site plan, and we're kind of tight team on the, on the plans. But we're very early in the design process. We have a nice plan. I think at this point, we've explored many different options. We're currently looking at welding, having a welding area, construction trades, public services, and then the remaining portions of the building being more flexibly oriented in the classrooms or spaces that could be used flexibly and in multiple ways or expanded in the future. We've also have currently the roofing project, which has come before you. I think previously, that's been awarded. And there will be, starting that project probably latter part of August, which is actually a good time for us, because that gives us a little bit more planning time that there's some adjustments that we need to make internally for penetrations or, or exterior conditions. And then we also, with the current plan, we're, funding is obviously the biggest challenge with us, because we have some funds available. Currently, we're looking at getting funds from other sources within the community. So we're not sure exactly where that number totally is. With the plan that we have started with, keeping it scaled back to try to stay within those funds as close as we can, FCI Construction put together a really, really rough budget, you know, that we don't have a lot of defined areas yet, but give us something to work with to try to back down into our number. With the limited plan, which is the areas I mentioned, and not really doing everything exterior-wise or in the site, we're probably in the range of around the six million dollar type of number. And we know that's above what we have available currently. So that, again, that's why we're looking at outside sources for that. The way we're also dealing with that is with FCI Construction of doing it in multiple phases or, or packages. We're going to back into the project with the most essential areas going down that line, roof being one of those. I'll be looking at the electrical systems, you know, getting a new power to the building and transformer and distribution throughout the building. Mechanical systems, making sure the building is, is maintained environmentally. And then, and, and then, I think at that point, then whatever's left over, we can ease into some of the physical components of the building. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff to talk a little bit about the site. Again, trying to do some of the form, basic things that would get us by.
We are working with our engineers currently to assess a load for the ultimate buildout of the building electrically and plumbing-wise, to make sure that our main infrastructure is put in place so that we don't have to come back and upgrade that at a later point. So the infrastructure will be in place for the full buildout. And that's why we've worked with all of the different departments to figure out what their ultimate needs are, so that we can accommodate that at some point in the future, that we don't shortside the building. We're also looking at the water main and sprinkler main to ensure that we have enough adequate water service to continue keeping the building fully sprinkled, as that's going to be a requirement by the building codes and to keep the building safe. We're working with our civil engineers, Walker and Associates, here in Columbia City to look at storm drainage opportunity. There's some swales and things that we'd like to get rid of and pave over, smooth out, clean up. And we're going to work with the local drainage board to see if there's a way to get our storm water into the drainage system quicker, rather than doing storm water detention onsite. That way, as other water comes into the area, ours is already gone. We also are looking at doing, you can see the, the ring road around the building that's on the original. This is as the building sits currently.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Don't we have a river?
Yes.
I need a storm water retention pump.
And that, that is our argument, is that we want to get that water into that river. So, yes.
This check is.
Yeah, we're not very far.
No, no. But as you can see, this is the, the current layout of the site, and it shows the gravel road that goes around the property. We're going to have to pave at minimum our required ADA parking. And so we're going to work with the requirements there to make sure that we meet those. But then the majority of the improvements to the site will consist of high-strength gravel paving, so that we can accommodate our emergency service vehicles, delivery vehicles, and then student-staff traffic. From there, if you want to go to the floor plan.
So is, what's it?
Yep.
There we go. There we are. Lexi, answer, Lexi.
There we go. Get that one. Thank you. So this is the layout that we've worked through. You can see the area that is in a purple here on the lower right. That is our public safety lab, and it has the gear storage. You'll see another portion of that classroom on the second floor, that, or another portion of that department on the second floor. As you go to the north, you have our construction lab and tool storage. And then you have the, in green is the welding lab with a locker room and material storage, which is the existing outdoor pole barn. And then there's the three classrooms that are in the L shape on the interior. Those are not dedicated to an individual program. That way, if a class needs a classroom, they can use it for a portion of the day or for an hour, and they go to their lab, and another class can come in and use that classroom, so you can get multi-use out of those without having classrooms that empty while you have a class in a lab. We also have some general storage areas. They're just north of the gear. We're putting in new restrooms and mechanical room. And wherever we can, since this is construction trades and trades in general, we're going to try to show off how the building is built. So we're going to leave the plumbing exposed in those areas, so that the instructors can take students in and show how things are plummed, show them mechanical systems and how the mechanical systems work, how you do annual maintenance, general maintenance. The switch gear is going to be exposed for all the electrical within those areas, so that they can go in and show them how to work on that. So we're trying to involve the students as much as we can in the building. And the contractors working with FCI are also wanting to involve the students as much in the construction. So they're already starting to earmark areas where they can supervise and the students can perform.
The, the open area, the, the large brown area, that, the hope would be to be able to get it to a point that it is usable in a flexible manner, so some of the other programs could go up and set out, set up some of their displays or, or experiences out in that area. It could also be utilized for an event, you know, for tables and chairs and, and presentation purposes. And that's one of the general storage areas would be an area to house tables and chairs that could be put in and out of that space. The other challenges I mentioned earlier was with the funding. One of the original thoughts and desires, and maybe long-term thought, is that the main entry area where it's shown at currently is a multiple level area as you come in. The, the thinking was to be able to pretty much tear that out and put it on a grade level access and make that the main focus of the entry. If funding is tight initially, that's going to be a bigger chunk of dollars to do that. And we could possibly shift that entry over beside that area that is on grade and get by for the time being, and that could be a future piece. So we're, we're kind of keeping strategies in mind as we're going through to be able to deal with funds.
And if you could go to, let's see, I'll go ahead and advance this one. There it is. So here you can see the public safety lab below, public safety classroom with public safety storage. It'd be the entry, conference room, mechanic room, and exit are all on the first floor, but they're tall spaces.
It'd be the entry, conference room, mechanic room and exit are all on the first floor, but they're tall spaces. And then there's a clear story, atrium area that exists currently and we're anticipating maintaining that. And then you see that there's the open area to the construction lab. We also have as part of the roofing project out of the public safety classroom is our walkable roof access. So you don't have to go up through a scuttle. You don't have to go out through a little ladder. You walk upstairs. You go out a short door. And it'll make being able to get out on that roof and maintain that roof much easier.
And the construction lab area and the public safety areas, those two areas are very tall spaces and those are relating to their function. You know, they they like that higher space. With that roof also, we're not able to do much else with it. It's not capable of putting rooftop units or mechanical systems up there. So we're just keeping it pretty well clean. And as we're looking at strategies with the mechanical system, we're in the process of of working with local vendors right now to be able to incorporate potentially or I hope different types of systems, you know, for different areas. You know, for the welding areas, kind of a separate little animal by itself mechanically. So you maybe we could do a rooftop unit that's ground mounted to be able to show how those work and demonstrate that to the kids. The mechanical space that we had on the first floor being two floors in height, we could do air handling systems and show the duct work and potentially coming out and then deal with some of the other areas. That's what I hope we can do. It's not necessarily the achievement. But if if somebody's willing to contribute and help that, that we can do.
We're also looking at repurposing the currently mothballed dust control system and put that at this building and connect it up to utilize in that construction trades area.
I think the last thing I have for questions is the the roofing project I mentioned earlier. That's scheduled to be completed by the 28th of November. And so we have some flexibility there as far as we're not using the building. So they they have that flexibility, but we really don't get that done either type. So we're not having the leaky, you know, coming in currently. And we're at a point now that we're ready to really get going and anxious to get going, you know, with developing the plans and getting into that next step. Yeah, questions?
Couple of questions. One, so I know we're putting a new roof on it right now. And you had said we have really haven't decided on the air handling units. So isn't that kind of counterproductive? Normally you set your new air handling units with the roof because you're tying all the curbing in at the same time?
Yeah, we're trying to stay off the roof as much as possible. I, if we're going to do rooftop units, we're going to ground mount them on the ground, not on the roof. And then with the system of roofing that we have, if there's any additional penetrations like a vent or a stack pipe or whatever, this roofing system is very flexible to allow that to happen after the fact economically. And also by going to August before they start, I'm hoping that we, you know, some of those things, if there are changes, we can have those before they start.
And our mechanical designer is working through those systems to figure out where they're going to go prior to that, getting started.
Perfect. Second question or last question, floor finishes. What are we talking? I mean, I'm obviously not probably not carpet, but.
Ground and honed concrete is what we're expecting most of it to be. It is an it is a construction and trades area.
More of an industrial type of look.
That's all I got.
You mentioned water and the fact that you're going to have to have a fire, a fire planer. What if something goes awry on a on a pressure test on a water main? Where where do we go then to find what we need? Is there?
Well, the original building was already sprinkled. And so basically what we're doing is assessing whether or not the additional number of toilets overtax that existing system. So that system was there. It was working and we would be able to use that service.
And what if it does?
And if it goes over, then we would likely have to go back to the city main and come in with the new main. Unfortunately, it's not that long of a distance from the road to the building and our where that plumbing is, is also where we expect to have our fire riser. So that's also another aspect of this, that the students can see a fire riser and understand how all of that and the the valving and alarms work.
We don't have a large amount of domestic water need. I mean, we'll have hand sinks and toilets and restrooms, but it's not a high level. The sprinkler system, you know, is really a lesser issue than maybe what it was before. So we're hoping that that size and main stays the same. And again, that's what we're in the process.
We currently have a six inch main and they said that basically for us to be required to go to an eight inch main, we'd have to be a large industrial high water usage. So it's not likely that the six inch main is going to not be adequate for us.
Other questions? I'm curious, any project like this, there's always something that you tear it apart. It's like, oh, my goodness, we never expected that. Any areas that maybe you have some concerns about or do you feel like everything, is there any more assessment that that you feel like you need to do on some of those?
To me, Jeff might have a different answer. But, you know, to me, it was the biggest challenge was with that front entry way of the way it was constructed. And we knew that kind of going into it, but it's how do you deal with it? There's wood framing over, you know, the the second levels on either side. On the mechanical room side, we're saying take it off and get rid of it. There's individual supports underneath. We're shoring it up, things like that. So just just get rid of it. On the other side, where with the restrooms being underneath, we can add additional support for it and and kind of deal with it there. So we decided to keep that. To me, that was probably the bigger.
Yeah, the one unforeseen area that we need to do some exploration is basically under classroom number one on the plan. There's a two to three inch raised floor area and we're not sure whether or not that that's capped over a a sunken floor area. And so until we get in and start doing some demolition. But that's a matter of backfilling and pouring some new concrete if it is there. So it's not a large unknown, but it is something that we do need to explore.
Great. I would also just comment that you know, the desire was to involve our our students in this process. And so I really appreciate that. And I have to say, Jennifer, I appreciate the fact that we have programs to where we can involve our students in this type of work just advance advances that education. And I did drive by there a little while back and on that back building, we had some students in there doing some demo and.
There's been a lot of students in.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jeff, give you a small update on that back building. We have gotten our state design release submission. The state has come back with a few comments. We went through those comments, addressed those comments, sent them back and we expect to receive a release in the next week or so. Also, I had a thought and I just lost it.
I did that twice.
Oh, I'll I'll figure it out.
That is an exciting project and we're very happy to be involved and anxious to see it through fruition.
He'll be sick of seeing us by the time it's done.
We might, you might be surprised.
We still on time? Is there anything that wish you guys?
I think we had a reasonable budget in our timeline. We've slipped about a month, month and a half. But I think that has allowed us to assess financially where we are, how we're going to achieve it and not critically damage the end turnover date. The the biggest goal is to get the students in the north building this fall and then have the building ready for next fall.
I would comment too on the from the budget side. You know, dollars are hard to come by, but we have had businesses and and other groups indicated an interest in supporting these things. And that's one of the reasons that we set up the Whitley County Collaborative or are basically foundation 501(c)(3) is they really, in some cases, they're not excited about making those donations unless it's two of 501(c)(3) and then that's the pass through to the school. So.
I'll I'll say that even from the construction trade side, you know, the various organizations, construction wise, have been going to a lot of the school systems and promoting this type of thing to happen because it's hard to get contractors or people to work in the labor force. And so anything they could do to promote that, they're very excited about that.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much for spending your evening. That concludes presentations. I'll move on to celebrations.
I'll lead us off the celebration to celebrate our small town values. I guess kind of came full circle for me tonight. A four H week was a success and we have passionate parents, involved people, the substitutes, we have a ton of those in there. And then I was impressed, I don't know if everybody could see it on the TV, the professional surveyor for this report we got was a former student. It's nice to see we hire former former grads. I see all those people that I remember and I kind of feel coming back as being a new member to the board, but I think that's neat to see Ryan Peppler. I won't hold it that he's a Cardinals fan. I know we have Cubs and Reds lovers everywhere, but it's neat to see. And this was a great document. I'm not sure how he did it. I'm amazed at this because I'm seeing things like catch basin rim and overhead utility lines. I mean, I don't know what this means exactly, but it sure is impressive work by Mr. Peppler, graduate of proud graduate of Columbia City. So just like to recognize the passionate folks we have here in this community. I think it's great.
I have one quick one and I would just like to to thank Todd for all the work he's done on this project. He has a lot of irons in the fire and does an amazing job. And this one is incredibly important to us. I know he'll address budgetary issues and he's a true negotiator. So I appreciate all your work that's going into that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jennifer Rafe, Director of Innovation and Career Tech Ed. Want to celebrate that we have 32 students that will be coming to us from out of district next year, this coming school year for CTE programming. So really excited to see that number grow as we continue to expand our reach and work with Chair Busco and Whitco. So really excited with that. Working with Lyle Q. Michael as our transportation safety person to make sure we have all the necessary transportation worked out to get the kids where they need to go. It's an extra layer of complexity when we have our automotive program offsite and construction offsite and things along those lines. So we're working through those. Do also want to celebrate and thank our technology department. If you are a parent, you know, we are transitioning to an upgrade of Skyward called Cumulative. It's still Skyward, but that's just the other name for it. So we released online registration today and are working through just a couple of hiccups, but we have over 7,000 entries, like parents going in and doing what they need to do. So very excited to see that they were able to access. I did do a quick poll of the lovely people here in the room and a couple had got in and some had a couple of issues, but we've been working through those as we speak. So I appreciate Sarah Liston, Tim Neller, Derek Kefelfinger, Seth Slater and myself really trying to get this off the ground as smoothly as possible. And we do appreciate everyone's patience and grace as we do work out the kinks as we transition. Thank you.
Other celebrations? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Peter?
Welcome to this meeting of the Board of School Trustees. If you have come to make a statement, ask a question or represent a group of or activity, we would like to recognize your presence. School employees, parents and members of the public are expected to treat one another with civility, courtesy and respect and words and actions. You will have three minutes to speak to the board. No one may speak more than one time. As you speak, keep in mind the following. Preface your comments by providing your name and group affiliation, if any. Comments made to the board are public comments. All statements should be directed to the full board. No person may address or question board members individually. Public comments which are harassing or repetitive will be stopped. Personal attacks are not permitted under any circumstances. If your speech becomes inflammatory, we will ask you to leave the podium. It is the policy of WCCS Board to listen to your comments or questions. However, we do not respond during the meeting.
Name's Peter Gangl. Four weeks ago, we went over a couple of things. I might go over the couple of things again because I'm not quite sure where we left off. But first off, you all have on the fourth line of your value statement accountability. Yet you've broken the law and you will not apologize for it. None of you will. And I will go over that law. 18 U.S.C. Section 241, conspir conspiracy against rights makes it a crime to conspire to injure, intimidate or threaten someone in the free exercise or enjoyment of any rights secured by the Constitution. Now, federal law, 18 U.S.C. Section 241, we've already gone over that, Section 245 statute cover protects individuals participating in federally protected activities such as, but not limited to voting, federal programs, employment, interference based on their participation, such as First Amendment in regards to Ms. Devine being retaliated against by letter. Dr. McDermott and the board backed her up against her First Amendment right to record a conversation. Now, Indiana Code section 35 dash 31.5 dash 2 dash 176 says that it is a one party right to consent, which means if it was just you and me having a conversation or you and me or either of you, you could, one of us has the right to record that conversation. And because she posted that online, she was told to take it down. She did not. You issued a retaliatory letter that you do not have the authority to do under. Give me a second. Indiana Code, Section 36 dash 1 dash 30 dash 8 subsection 7 powers specifically withheld the power to regulate conduct that is regulated by a state agency, in this case, the courts or another agency such as Department of Education, section higher than you, if they have.
30 seconds.
Express except as expressly granted by statute. Now, I asked a member of the board last December, last year to provide me that statute and you could not. So you all have committed crime. Conspiracy. Dr. McDermott signed it. That's a matter of public record. And then a member of this board told me you all have that right. You didn't provide it in statute. You merely said you had the right.
Your time has expired.
Y'all don't have the right.
Next is Melissa Wechler.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Wechler and I'm a parent and community member here in Whitley County. I'm speaking tonight to express my strong opposition to renewing the contract of the district's attorney, Tim Shelley. Legal counsel should serve as a neutral advisor committed to upholding the law, protecting students and guiding the board in transparent governance. Unfortunately, what I've observed under Attorney Shelley's tenure does not reflect those values. Instead, there appears to be a pattern of adversarial tactics, a lack of impartiality and decisions that seem to escalate conflict rather than resolve it. Additionally, I believe it would make better fiscal and practical sense to seek legal representation from within our community or closer proximity. Would a local attorney be more invested in maintaining community trust and resolving issues collaboratively rather than prioritizing billable hours? This community deserves legal counsel that promotes unity, accountability and student centered values. I respectfully urge you not to renew Attorney Shelley's contract. Thank you.
That is all of our public expression this evening. Move on to the next item is consent agenda.
I move that we approve consent items.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
I have a question. I'm sorry. And I and I, I'm not sure where this is located, but as far as my question involves a cell phone question, I've asked it a few times. And this involves the vouchers of payroll in there, but I, my question is we have cell phones assigned to some, I was told we have cell phones assigned to some people. And when I've asked further about that, I was told it would be updated in the administrative handbook and be in the July 7 meeting covering that.
in the administrative handbook and be in the July 7 meeting covering that. I just wanted to follow through and see what the cellphones were, if it should be in an addendum or in the contract. I've just never got anything clear in it. And I apologize if I missed it from the last meeting, but I didn't hear anything about it. Or yeah, just to follow through with that.
It is in the change to the administrative handbooks that we're looking at today is specifically the cellphone changes, the addition of the cellphone reimbursement. That's something that needed to be updated. It, I don't remember how many years, but it's been a number of years that we've been paying those. But it needed to be updated in the administrative handbook. It had not been.
Okay.
We discussed that at the work session last time. That was, that was a point of discussion.
Yeah, that's why I was just trying to get some clarification of what that really meant. Because when I looked at the changes or proposed changes, I didn't physically see any. I was just told or understood that we're going to remove some things like a certain policy and harassment, bullying things that were covered elsewhere. I didn't specifically see anything added about this. If someone could tell me the, the page or just show me a visual of what that says, maybe. Again, I apologize. Maybe we discussed it, but I didn't see the actual written statement or I, or I couldn't find it. So I would appreciate that.
I don't have that.
It's just later, just gonna put it up on the screen. It's page six of the administrator.
And this would be for the revised handbook?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Dave, I have a question on personnel.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, I noticed that there were four positions that were entitled implementation specialist. And so I just want curious is the job description and are what duties that those people would have? Implement, implement, like, implementation specialist. There are four positions in the high school.
They're part of the school improvement grant to the high school. We had implementation teams specialist last year as well. So they're, they're a part of that grant. That team works to continue the work that's going on at the high school.
They're not like single position. That's in addition to their current position, correct? It's, it's not a standalone position. It's, is it in addition?
Right, right, right.
Yes.
Yes. You are correct. Yes.
Do you happen to know what the stipend is?
I don't. I mean, if you'd asked me ahead of time, I could have prepared that. Okay.
Chad, does this answer your question?
It's a little hard to read. Sorry. Administrators. Okay, I'm just, oh, thank you. So in my experience, I've seen where the cellphones specifically are listed as like an addendum as part of a contract. I just feel that might be best practice. Don't know that that's for a for sure thing, but my experience with other school districts, they'll, they'll list, you know, a contract and they'll, they'll put down in the addendum, for example, not saying this is exact number, but teacher or administrator would get this amount for their retirement account. And they would get X amount of dollars for a cellphone allowance and a car allowance, things of that nature. I, I question and wonder if that would be best to put in to just their, their contracts for full, full transparency and disclosure. That's what I've seen before as a best practice, but you know, I, I just won't bring it up as a question to understand better.
It's a good question. We can look into that.
Cellphones are not, they're not a perk. They have nothing to do with an employee's, hey, they're only getting reimbursed because I believe it's a reimbursement, correct? Because they're
If, if it's a stipend, yes, it's a reimbursement.
Because they're using their personal device.
Basically, this was outlined to us by our auditor. I mean, this was what our auditor suggested. So
And we want to have
State Department accounts.
If somebody, if it's important that somebody would have a cellphone and they need it for their job, if we're tying it to contracts, then it ties our hands to be flexible and do the things that we need to do.
I'm just asking. That's what I've seen from other districts around that, that fully post their addendums and things. So I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm, I'm asking, maybe it requires further, further discussion in, in my opinion, just because I'm unsure of that.
Sure.
So not saying I know James right or wrong. Like you said, I think our admin and certain folks need a cellphone. It's probably part of their job. But in my experience, it's been part of their contract to be part of their job. So that's, I guess, difference of opinion there.
Do you, do you think you could bring one or just something we could look at? Or do you
Oh, absolutely.
Send one out or something?
I can do that this evening. Sure. A sample of what I've seen from others. Yeah.
Great. Any other questions regarding the consent agenda? This time I actually remembered we already have a motion and a second. So all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed? Have Chad?
I'm just doing an abstain, Dave. I don't really, yeah, I don't quite, don't quite understand it all. So I feel it's best move.
I'm opposed. I'm worried about the revised employee handbooks. The actual ones as well.
Okay, that's specifically covered under the action items under section six. That's not covered under this. If, if you wish to vote no, that's still fine.
So I got.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So you're in favor then? Or not?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Chad abstains. Kate votes no. The remainder are yes. So the, the motion is approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of issuing adjunct teacher permit. We discussed this in exec, or in our work session two weeks ago. Are there any further questions, comments regarding this? There are none. I'd entertain a motion for approval.
I recommend that WCCS Board approve and issue the adjunct teacher permit as presented.
I'll second.
Put motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next item was also discussed at the work session, approval of adjunct teacher employment agreements. If there are no additional questions or comments, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I motion that we approve the three adjunct teacher employment agreements as presented.
I'll second.
Put motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the approval of textbook adoption for construction trades. Does anyone have any additional questions following our discussion at the work session? If there are none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I motion that we approve the textbook adoption for construction trades to support the articulation agreement between CCHS and the Central Midwest Regional Council of Carpenters, otherwise CMRC.
I'll second.
Put motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approval of the revised WCCS employee handbooks, administration, classified, classified management, and transportation. And Lisa, I think that's where
Yes, my concern are certain things are left out of it. And I understand that they're in policy itself, but the anti-harassment and the anti-bullying or training, along with parts of the 9130, I feel that they should still be there for quick access to each of the new employees instead of going through the whole policy book and searching for them since they're so important.
And this is the, again, I, maybe I jumped out of line because they're kind of, kind of connected in a way, I suppose. But this is the, the question I have with like cellphones and different things. I, I feel like it might be best to table that for further discussion. I'll send the board a sample of what I've seen as, as something, if there are any other requests and things. But I believe that's a good point that we covered that very quickly. And I don't know that we all have a great grasp of what we may be voting on in that regards.
Those specific items were deleted because they are redundant. They are covered under policy. And it actually can, having it in both places actually can lead to some challenges in that it's not like there's a, it's not like there's a flow chart that says, well, you changed this, you need to change them, you need to change this, this, and this. And so we have redundancy. If we have redundancy and not all of those items are changed, it can, it can lead to confusion. So, and that isn't about what, what you're talking about. I'm talking about the items deleted. And Laura presented specifically what those were and which policies, or yeah, which policies they were covered under.
I guess further with the cellphone stuff is an example. I'm sure there might be other things, but it lists administrators. But yeah, I think we have cellphones and things that go to, which I fully agree and support, but they go to like our maintenance, head of maintenance and some other folks that might not be administrators. I guess that's further my reason. Just it might be, make better sense to put that in an addendum like I've seen before with other schools. It just, it's clear who's and what that's for if, if those things happen. But again, I feel like it might be something we can discuss later. After I show you a visual, I think that'll be a great, a great help.
On the cellphones, weren't those already covered in the handbook for the
Yes, they're in class. It's a classified management. It's all going classified adjunct teacher. Yes, it's in all of them. Thank you. Yes.
I would still request to table because I am concerned. I think that these new employees should have this direct information with instant access where they go through their book and find it. Unless there's another place besides the policy manual where they'll have quick access to it. It's important for them to know going into classrooms and, or different areas that they go into about the anti-harassment, the anti-bullying and, and different things.
The bullying is covered in all of the handbooks, the student handbooks that's in there. The bullying training is covered in the, is by law, by legislation. We have to cover bullying training by October 15th.
In the handbook?
Every year, every employee.
Okay. Cause in the new handbooks that you sent us out, it's
It's in the student handbooks.
Oh, but it doesn't have to be in the employee handbooks for them to know about it?
What happens is when it's in, the information is in the handbooks. So if the policy changes, legislation changes, not only then do you have to change the policy, but you have to change all four handbooks.
So it's no longer the same policy that it used to be. It needs to be the anti-harassment policy needs to be redone and then put back into the handbook?
So if they, if we change the anti-harassment policy, then we'll have to update not only the anti-harassment policy, but then we'll have to update what's in all four handbooks.
When are we planning on changing it?
I don't know what the legislate, legislature will do. And that's, I mean, you never know what they're going to do. I didn't know that they were going to update tag what they did. I mean, I've got, I don't know, six, seven policies we're going to go through today that have to be updated. I will update you today on that. I'll have to bring you all six or seven of those this next month. We'll have to update all six or seven of those policies. And that's just the beginning of policies that will have to be updated because of laws that changed this past session.
Well, then would we be able to table this until we get those new laws?
Those laws aren't covered in the handbooks.
I understand that, but the policy was in the handbook. And that's what I'm asking about. If you have to change a policy because of the new law, if we wait until the new law comes in.
What I'm suggesting is that we not put policy in the handbooks because that complicates what has to be updated by the board when a policy has to be updated. If a employee, if an employee is being harassed, they're going to go to their supervisor. Their supervisor is going to talk to them about, here is policy. Here's how you address that. And they're going to have a conversation and they're going to direct them to policy. That's their supervisor's role.
And do they receive training?
The supervisors? Oh, absolutely.
So they're familiar with and wouldn't need to refer to the handbook?
Is it just a simple copy and paste? I mean, it's certainly, there might be some technology. I mean, I can think of how a website works in HTML and things of my nature, but if we have a statement about harassment, wouldn't it be just as easy to have that linked to the policy? So it's always in there? I don't know if people, if I'm explaining that clearly, but it just seems like it's too complicated to copy and paste something that, that's important. It seems simple to me.
It requires board action.
But so would the policy if it changed. So we can just flatline all of it. It means a copy and paste. I can't take more than a few minutes, I would think, but it's my perspective.
Dave, if we have someone asking to table it, is that something that they need to make a motion and we take a vote whether we're going to table it or not? And then if we do not table it, we would move forward with voting on approval?
Correct.
I believe our board policy says there is no vote if someone asks to table something.
Well, an individual can't table something by themselves.
If I read it as it says for 0166.1, a member may request an item to be removed and defer it for a specific action and more discussion.
That refers specifically to the consent agenda.
Not action items?
No, that would be if you didn't like something in the personnel report, you could say, hey, I want this removed from the consent. The, the reality is, we probably should have removed a couple of items from the consent agenda, but we had that discussion and then took a vote on it overall. But that's really what we'd be referring to.
Okay. I guess I was confused. I remember when, I think it was James, okay, I don't want to say it was you, but we had removed something because you wanted a further definition of something. I thought that was
And we voted on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. There was a motion and a second to table.
Okay. Again, I just want to make sure we're, I'm understanding what was going on.
Sure. And then some of those nuances can be a little confusing.
Absolutely.
I'm just curious if someone could explain it to me like I'm five. What do we do have a harassment policy in place for staff?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Is there somewhere to reference that?
There's nothing that's being deleted from these that isn't in policy. Policy is posted on our website. Our, our supervisors are trained with, they understand those situations and how to address them.
Okay.
So they're, so that's the situation.
I'm just trained it.
So our anti-harassment policies are 1662, 3362, 4362. So it's not just a policy. It's three policies. So it covers administration, it covers classified staff, and it covers certified staff. So it's not just one, like discrimination, non-discrimination is 1422, 1623, 3122, 2260, 2260.01, 3123, 4123. So it's not changing a single policy. That's changing 1234, seven policies. Our complaint procedure is a single procedure, but substance abuse is 3170, 4170, 4162.10, 1613. So that's four policies. So it's not just a simple cut and paste. You have to go through the policies individually and change them based on what the policy is about and what it states.
So, but when you change the first one, would it not be pasting to the ones in there?
No.
You're saying no?
Policies are written differently for different purposes.
I disagree.
It makes complete sense to me.
So we're just pulling policies out of the handbook, correct?
We're just pulling the policies out of the handbook so that when the policies, if the policies change, we don't have to change the handbooks.
Yeah. But the description in the handbook actually is a lot more simple than what you were talking about that we have. If you've seen it, it doesn't talk about all the different policies that is connected to it. It just has like a, a basic for understanding for teachers.
It references the policy. Yes.
But it doesn't reference all of the policies with the numbers that you stated. It's just like a basic makeup, which is nice because then the teachers will know, I need to check into this and find out what's going on. and find out what's going on, you know, what I can do in situations. That's, that's what I really want.
These handbooks are not written for teachers. None of these handbooks cover teachers.
Well, for any new hires, not just teachers, I'm sorry. But any new hires, I feel should be able to have this instant access, even if it's just like this basic write-up.
Can I make a motion to approve the handbooks as presented?
We have a motion.
Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry.
We don't have a second yet. We have a motion for approval of the revised WCCS employee handbooks. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Certainly. Uh, is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing none. Uh, Chad?
I, I will vote that I feel like there's way too much confusion with this. I feel like it just deserves further discussion to be all on board and for us to unite as a board. So I'm gonna vote no.
James?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Lisa?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kate?
No.
I am yes. The motion passes. Next item on the agenda is appointment of board attorney for July twenty twenty five to June twenty twenty six. This also was discussed at our, uh, work session. I would ask if there are any questions or comments related to that?
I've got a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, um, I would like to have explanation as to whether or not Mr. Shelley or in this case, the board attorney, um, is representative of the corporation, which includes administration and that part of it and or the board. Or is it mostly just for the corporation, which involves just the administration, uh, staff, certified staff and so forth?
He represents the district. That may involve, uh, individual board members de- depending on the circumstances. Uh, and it, it could involve working with, certainly would involve working with administration. And I don't know if Mr. Shelley's here, so if you'd like to, if you would like to address any of these questions. If you would, they can't hear you otherwise. I'm sorry.
And Ms. Smith, my obligation is to the school corporation and the school board. Sometimes that means I have to take positions adverse to particular employees, adverse to particular students, adverse to particular parents or patrons. My obligation is to unite and the school corporation. That's how the school corporation acts is through your actions. Does that answer your question? Okay, yeah. Anybody else want to up here? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion, uh, for approval of, uh, Mr. Shelley as the board attorney, district attorney.
I motion for approval of the hiring of Tim Shelley with Warwick and Boine LLP as the board attorney from July twenty twenty five until the end of June of twenty twenty six.
If a motion is there a second?
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those. Uh, Chad?
I feel like I need to abstain again. Some personal conflicts have been happening lately, uh, involving board and admin. So I feel it's probably best to stay out of this one.
So Chad will abstain. Uh, James?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Lisa?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kate?
No.
Motion passes with the majority. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Uh, motion passes with the majority. Next item, that is the end of action items. Next item is general information. Uh, first item there is IDOE Digital Intervention Implementation and Training Grant. Seth?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, this is just some information. The, the district, we applied for the twenty twenty five, um, Indiana Department of Education Digital Innovation Intervention Implementation Grant. And essentially that was a competitive grant for MTSS services. So we can provide some additional intervention support for students who need that. Uh, it was open to both math and, uh, ELA. Um, as we looked at opportunities in math, there weren't, there weren't as many tools. So we applied for Mind Play Reading Coach, which is a digital intervention tool that'll be paired with a, with, with an instructor. Um, and so students will have an opportunity to get some additional intervention through the tool, uh, during intervention time in addition to the instructional time. Um, the value of the grant is twelve thousand seven hundred forty one dollars. It's a one-year grant. And will, if, if the board approves, um, we'll begin that implementation here first week of August with some training and then throughout the school year with our staff.
Can I just ask you, I know we throw the MTSS around a lot. If you can just remind everybody what that stands for.
Yeah, so MTSS is multi-tiered systems of support. So when we look at students who are, are achieving at grade level with their peers, they're in that, that we're gonna call it tier one. They're, they're on grade level and doing well. Um, students who are struggling and who may need some additional small group support. That's what we would call tier two. So they kind of get either pulled out more often plugged in, or the teacher kind of provides some additional time. And then tier three is that one-on-one support to make sure that those students aren't falling behind.
And is that a, a system that is statewide? Is it, is it something that every district utilizes?
Yeah, that, that's, that's international common system for, for intervention.
Other questions, comments? Seth, you're up again with twenty twenty five spring I-Learn scores.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're gonna put it up on the screen as well. So you've got an example. I've given you in front of you, you've got, uh, actually two documents. Um, the first is an achievement report, which is what I'm gonna share tonight. The second document has some commentary, some very specific I-Learn, uh, reports, rankings, uh, with, with neighboring districts. Very specific grade level percentages and there's four pages there. Um, so I'm not gonna go through all ninety-seven lines of data, but happy to answer questions on it, um, as, as you have them. Um, wanna talk a little bit tonight about just the overall school year and how I-Learn data came out. Um, last week, the school board, state board of education approved the release of the data. And so again, it's good timing to, to be able to share it. At next month's meeting, we'll talk I-read scores. Those will be approved at the I, at the August state board of education meeting for, for release. Um, so we're not gonna talk I-read, but, um, I-read for second and third graders as it appears right now is very positive for our district compared to last year. So we'll kind of jump through that. Um, kind of just looking at the overall. So the, the first slide here covers the I-Learn ELA uh, data, district averages versus state averages. Um, you've got math, science, social studies, kinda see where, where we're performing in comparison to others in the state and in comparison to, um, obviously our, our, ourselves. Um, the growth there is versus last year's performance. So as you look at this, um, and as was presented at the state board on Wednesday, state averages have stayed pretty flat for the last two years, three years, really coming out of COVID. There was an initial jump and then it's been relatively flat. Um, one area that the state did not see a lot of growth in was ELA. You can see that that's at, at zero, just in terms of general percentages. We'll talk specifics later on. Um, but, but for us, kind of in comparison to the, the state, we did see a three percent growth in our ELA scores across the board this year, um, in comparison to last year. Are we at the state average? No. And I think that's an important point to make out. Um, we can say the same thing with math. Are we at the state average? No. And that's, those are areas where we need to do some grow, um, some, I say improvement. We need to find some growth. Um, and that's the, that's the overall. Science, we, we had some, some strong growth and then in social studies, we had a little bit of negative growth. As a district, this summer, we've spent a significant amount of time with math and, um, ELA curriculum writing and curriculum alignment. So when you look at kind of how did we do? Great example here is, is our math proficiency. We lost a lot of, 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 uh, progress, um, in our math proficiency scores in comparison to last year for grade three specifically. Um, that, that's somewhat, I'm gonna say somewhat in alignment with the state. The state saw a, a third grade decrease as well. But not to that extent. And so one of the things that, as we, we saw that, one of the things we spent some time on in May and then the first couple of weeks of June was curriculum alignment. Um, that doesn't tell the full story. We had two schools that were fifty-five percent or sixty percent in terms of proficiency. We had two schools that, that were much lower and they kind of pulled down that, that average. Um, in part because of, of instructional, um, scope and sequences. There, our, our Montessori is a great example, doesn't teach, uh, division at the same time that our, our other schools teach. So just because the Montessori, um, model. So there are some areas there where what students know may not be fully captured in I-Learn assessment data because it's not necessarily lined up with what we're teaching at the time. This summer, we spent some time doing just that, going through and looking at I-Learn, looking at the scope and sequence in terms of what's being tested and looking at our teaching framework and when we're teaching different concepts. What makes sense for student learning versus what makes sense for the test? And one of the questions the teachers had to grapple with a little bit is, do we teach in alignment with the test or do we teach in alignment with natural progress of learning? Um, and, and teachers were, I think overwhelmingly in favor of doing what's best for kids, whether the test necessarily shows that or not. And so we, we did see that, but we did go through and I'll talk a little bit about I-Learn checkpoints at this point. I-Learn checkpoints coming in next year is a through year assessment. And so what we'll see is the, the summative test that we have data on right now is going to be broken into essentially three tests that are formative to see what students know and how they're making progress. And then a summative to see if students have mastered the concepts over the course of the year. And with the checkpoints, we're gonna have a lot more data right now than, in the future than what we do right now in terms of on these five standards, are students at above, below, or do, are they in need of that intervention significantly? Um, we'll also have a little bit more clarification on the data in terms of are, are we, are students performing at, uh, on track with where they're expected to be at the end of the year? Because there will be things at checkpoint one that are being assessed in September for sixth or seventh grade. Those students aren't gonna master that in September, but they're gonna be assessed in September as to whether or not they know the concept. And that's, you know, a grade level concept. So we'll, we'll get that data. Um, as we kind of work through the year though, that, that's important to look at. And so we have made some efforts this year to make sure that what we're teaching not only aligns somewhat with the test, but it makes sense for, for students. And we have dedicated with our staff, we had twenty-five staff members who spent three weeks almost between May and the first two weeks of June, spending some time on curriculum mapping and working through that. We can say the same thing with ELA. Um, Lexi, will you go back one, two slides? There you go. Um, with the, with the ELA data, when we look at like the grade three, grade four data, um, again, you can kind of see some, some one more slide. You can see that we're somewhat stable within that two percent growth loss range. What is really exciting for us to see at the middle school especially is high growth percentile. So we're seeing some of the efforts of the middle school doing some curriculum writing last summer. We're seeing that um, show fruition this year. I'll say the same thing. We spent some time on ELA curriculum mapping and training, um, the first again, two weeks of June. And hopefully we're gonna see that alignment better with, with checkpoints, alignment better with what we're assessing and what our common assessments look like, what our formative assessments look like with our units. And again, as we look to next year with checkpoints, I think it's gonna tell a different story. In terms of where students are mastering concepts and where we might be struggling a little bit. Um, science proficiency rates for the last several years, we've, we've far exceeded the state average as we did in sixth grade. Um, I think the fourth grade is evident that we need to take a look at science curriculum and make sure that with the new standards that have been pushed out, that what we're, I'm gonna say what we're teaching aligns, which I think it does. But also that what we're teaching aligns vertically from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade and into sixth. So that way again, students have foundational knowledge from the beginning all the way up and they're not just getting concepts at the very end. Social studies, fifth grade literature, or sorry, fifth grade social studies is a, is a huge genre. From the beginning of North America to the modern era, to personal financial literacy, to explorers, to economics. Um, there's a lot of stuff beyond just Indiana history. You know, we've got in essence, two thousand years of history being covered in fifth grade. And so you've got eleven-year-olds learning about economics and different systems of government and different, different economic systems. Personal finance, out of balance checkbook, which isn't all terrible, but then they're also learning all the explorers and all the other stuff. So there's a lot there. But again, I, I'd say the same thing. It, this data, we, we've been below the state average for the last several years and it's, it's worth some time and some investment, especially as we look into the next year to do some curriculum planning and mapping to make sure that what students are leaving fifth grade with is setting them up for success in sixth grade and beyond. So we wanna make sure we're, we're doing that. Going, going to the, the next slide, one of the things that I think is really important to point out and, and Dr. Jenner mentioned this in her presentation for the, the state is that Indiana, not, not all tests are the same. So every state has its own assessment, every state delivers its own assessment, designs its own assessment and then measures that assessment against itself. And there are very few national assessments that are out there for us to look at and see how are our students doing in Indiana or in Whitley County in comparison to others across the nation, to their peers? One of the things Dr. Jenner said, which I thought was really, really interesting and, and important, and I think the data shows it is that Indiana's I-Learn assessment is one of the more rigorous assessments in the nation. And that's evidenced by the, the national assessment of educational progress, the, the NAEP test. Um, where Indiana ranked sixth this year in fourth grade ELA and sixth in this year in fourth grade math. And so as a state, our students are performing far and away better than neighboring states. Even if neighboring states on their statewide assessment are showing, you know, a hundred percent of their kids are eighty-five percent proficient in math. So the rigor of the test does show something nationally when we look at the NAEP performance. Um, and so I, I think that's important, but NWA also shows that national norm. And when we look at reading, this is the, this is generally speaking across the district for the district profile. And they, and the next slide goes into, um.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Absolutely.
So on this particular slide, so like you look at reading all the way over to the one to twentieth percentile, does that mean it used to be fifteen percent and now it's down to twelve?
Correct.
But that's good, not bad.
Good, that's good. Yeah.
Your red makes it kind of deceptive. It makes it.
Yeah, sorry.
Chart.
When it balances a little bit, so like for this reading, what we saw this year, and this is the spring data and this is in comparison to the, the fall data, this is one year of growth. So what we saw is that fewer students, six percent fewer students were under the six, the sixtieth percentile and had moved into, all six of those kids had moved into that eightieth percentile and higher. So we saw tremendous growth from, from our kids. And, and that's, that's the growth that of the achievement data is kind of the same way. This is showing again, in comparison to their peers. So at the percentile, but then we also see the, the number of kids that moved in that percent, into that percentile. In comparison to, from the achievement, this is spring of twenty twenty-four. So we saw six percent of students move into that eightieth percentile. Of the kids we have right now, those students were performing at far better uh, rates, showing, showing better mastery, understanding, um, foundational knowledge, language usage, math than what they were a year ago. And that's really important to see that our kids are showing progress at the national level. I-Learn again is a rigorous test. It's designed to be a rigorous test. Um, the state wide averages, I think, demonstrate that, that it's rigor when forty percent of kids at the state level are passing. I think there's, there's, we can always ask questions about, should that be happening? Um, but it's very promising to see that at the, at the national level, our kids are growing. They're showing great progress and in comparison. They're showing great progress and in comparison to their peers at the same grade level, at the same age, same number of days of instruction, they're outperforming those peers pretty significantly. So that's important. On the, on the next slide, just two other, two other items to kind of cover. I guess one last item, go to the last slide, Lexi. Another thing, and should have mentioned it during our, our celebrations, but as we look at the high schools, we talked three through eight with ILEARN, but the high school has a, has some tests as well. So for the SAT, which is the, lack of a better term, exit assessment for the high school, although it has no value on graduation anymore. Our, our 11th grade students in the English, language, reading, writing, there's, there's a whole term. I simplified it to ELA, but that's not the actual acronym. In that second section, we saw 57% of those students meet the benchmark, which was a 2% growth over last year. The state average this year was 55%. Really important to point out that every student has to take the SAT. Whether they intend to go to college or not, that is a required test for all juniors to take. And so there are, there's a significant chunk of students who see the SAT has no value to their future plans. And so the data, we're, we're outperforming the state, which is, which is positive. But there's also a big chunk of the state that it, it's irrelevant. When we talk about CTE, when we talk about certifications, when we talk about dual credit and, and some of those other pieces, we've got a lot of students walking out of school with a lot of great pieces of, of really useful documentation that's going to be applicable into their future. The SAT may or may not be that piece of paper for every one of those kids. The last point, as we talk about it, and glad to take questions, our AP students for the first time had, we, we had two classes, at least I'm going to say first time in recent years, pre-COVID. I don't, I don't have access to the data, the AP website doesn't go back that far. But we, we had two classes with 100% passing rate in AP. And that is fantastic. We had another class was 95%. Overall, I think we only had one program that was below the national and global average. And that was with a, a, a first year teacher who still saw almost 60% of their students pass. So really good progress. We saw 23% growth over last year, which was really important to point out. And the, the goal, and this is talking about handbooks a little bit, one of the, one of the documents written into the teacher contract is, in order to be eligible for the teacher's type of year students, you have to have 50% of your students pass. Every one of our teachers had 50% of their students pass. Every one of our teachers exceeded that by, by a solid amount. Only one teacher, I think, was at 55%. The rest were 60% and higher. So our students did really well. Again, 10% above the state average in terms of that and, and almost 20% above the global average. So students are doing well in the programs that we've got for, for SAT and for AP. Questions about the data?
Well, first of all, I appreciate you breaking that down because I tried to look at that on my phone and the number twos would not magnify it enough. But that was really difficult. So thank you. And, and the checkpoints thing, and I talked to, to Lauren, I talked to Mary Ann. I think that is a huge part about what we will see in the next 12 months because the data shows that the checkpoints, the schools that were in the, I don't know if it was the beta version or whatever it was, but those checkpoints are a huge plus for those school corporations. So that, that's great. Second of all, can, can we somehow get a breakdown of school? Or is that not something that's shareable? Like which school performed, which school didn't, which school, you mean? Not, I don't want to be, see a versus, I just want to kind of see overall where we're at as a corporation.
I believe that's all on the DOE website.
It's, it's tough to.
To navigate.
Yeah, yeah.
All, all of that's on DOE website. I don't have, I didn't put it in the, in Board Docs, but I can, I can put that breakdown. Okay. School by school very specifically in terms of how they did. It's hard to grab it, but I can grab screenshots. There's 50 tests basically by the time you get through math, ELA for all.
Yeah.
Seven grade levels plus.
You guys.
But I give you, for example.
Do, do you, do you guys spitwad what, what happened here or how this was good or where this was bad? Or what happened, why, or hey, this is great, you know? I mean, do you guys go through that as an, as an admin team or will you or?
We have a little bit and we will continue. We're going to talk about this on Thursday, actually at our admin meeting.
Okay.
Again, kind of looking at, I'm going to say elementary, what was the work that the elementary has done in the areas where they've, they've seen strong growth?
Yeah.
When, um, we'll, we'll talk I READ data next month, very, very similarly. The, the literacy cadre has seen some excellent results, especially in Northern Heights, 78% of students or something. Like there was some significant growth in terms of the impact of that particular effort.
Yeah.
The impact of literacy coaches, you know, is, is seen again in those buildings. So as we look at Mary Raiber this year in their second year with the literacy cadre, hopeful to see some benefits. And, and we also look at it by the teachers. We, we have some teachers who've done really well and we have some teachers in the same grade level in the same building who've, who've struggled. And again, it's worth alignment questions. Like, are you teaching the same thing as your, as your colleague next door? Same scope and sequence? And we've had those conversations with the teachers. We've had some of those conversations, especially I'll say with our elementary principals. Wes and his team, it's, it's not as big of a group. But we, we've had that conversation. And again, this is, this data is worth continuing the conversation on as we go into next year and as we start talking about what can we do to make sure students are performing where they need to be performing to be successful at the next level, the next unit, the next week, whatever the case may be.
Mr. Slater, I really appreciated your owning the accountability part of it because some of the numbers are, are bad. And I think we hear a lot of the celebrations, which I'm, I love hearing. But you know, it's not always unicorns and rainbows. And for the past six years, we've gone down almost double digits from 2019 to now, 9% in English Language Arts, 9% in math, 11% in science and 13% in social studies for the ILEARN, at least for the numbers that I see on, on there. So I know we've got a lot of work to do. I love hearing how we're attacking those things, but I'm curious if we, as I've kind of made it a point tonight to say, I love our small town, I love our small town values. But if we look at those numbers and ditch, I don't, personally, I don't feel like we're anything close to Indianapolis Public Schools or Fort Wayne Community for that matter. And if we take those out, some of those big, huge districts, I'm curious to see where our data lines up with maybe smaller schools that are similar to us. And, and as I get better at navigating the DOE, because like Tom said, that's so hard to see where we're, we're in comparison with. But I, I love to hear the accountability. I know no one's perfect and we're always looking for improvement. So thank you for that presentation.
One of the documents I gave you that has all the numbers on it. The second page has, and this is, this is total, not grade level, but it has some brief comparison to how we line up against the, the surrounding counties. Some of them were in the lead and, and in the top two or three, and some of them were in the bottom two or three. And again, you know, I think that, that's, that's worth looking at. The, the other piece that I'll, I'll add is the standards have changed, the standards have been reduced, the standards have increased, the test has changed, it changes every year. It's really hard with ILEARN to say, last year we did this and it lines up with this year because they took out seven standards. So it's not even the same test as it was, you know, two years ago. And so to get that achievement data, even on a three-year average is really hard. And, and it's, we've, we've talked about it before, it's really hard to know how the state's calculating data because kids move. And so which kids are counted for us and which kids aren't? And the, the math is impossible for us to track on our own. But, but we accept all, we test all and we try to get them all to be at, you know, the, the best that student can be. And some of it's owning this and some of it is just making sure we surround those kids with, with wraparound services.
Other questions, comments?
Thank you, Seth.
Yes. Appreciate what you've provided us here. It's very helpful. Next item on the agenda is the, there's policy review, as you mentioned earlier, Dr. McDermott. There are a number of legislative items, new laws that impact some of our policies. And I believe that's what you're going to be touching base on, the items that are listed here.
Yes, and I'm going to go through these fairly quickly because you're going to see them again. And we're kind of running behind times. The first one is 2221 is mandatory curriculum. And it basically lists what we have to recover, uh, cover in the schools by state law. Changes here are based on instruction on human sexuality. And it must emphasize abstinence as the expected standard, which is already in our policy. We have to include information on consent. We have to feature a medically accurate presentation of fetal development, including a video of high-definition ultrasound at least three minutes in length. Schools must disclose whether instruction will be coed or separated and who will deliver it, a male or female instructor. Of course, all curriculum materials have to be approved by a school board and published online on the school website. So we do, some of that is in there and some of it is not. We may be the recommendation by our comprehensive policy management service that we reduce a lot of this verbiage in this particular policy. Next one is 3220.01, teacher appreciation grants. That one's going to change significantly. Tag appropriation was lowered by 1.9 million. That grant has been modified to include, it is now a competitive grant administered by the IDOE. It may not exceed 20% of certified teachers. So those stipends will not go to every teacher as it has in the past. It can only go to 20% of the teachers. And that's if we write the grant and there's criteria for those teachers. So it has to be based on high performance of student outcomes. So it has to be based on how we define student outcomes. So it has test scores in some way, form or fashion. And then whether they are in instructional leadership to improve student outcomes or serve in high need or geographic shortage areas as determined by the DOE. So that policy will definitely be changing. 5111, that's determination of legal settlement and eligibility for enrollment of students without legal settlement in the corporation. This one will change because we have to remove language prohibiting student transfers for athletic purposes. We have, now have to allow student transfers for athletic purposes. We have to take that language out of that policy. 5200 attendance in this one. Schools shall authorize absence and excuse if a student participates in a scheduled competition, exhibition or event offered by FFA or 4H. So we'll have to add those as exempted absences. We also, chronic absentee is still defined as 10% of the year. It expands grade range for habitually truant to include K to 12, not just K to six. Limits suspension and expulsion solely for polar attendance for K eight through July of 2026. So we're going to have to look at that. And then 5630.01, use of seclusion and restraint with students. Legislative action, we have to consider this policy. The DOE is reviewing and making recommendations regarding nonviolent crisis intervention training programs. We currently use CPI or crisis prevention intervention to train our staff. And that emphasizes proactive strategies, early intervention and non-physical methods to prevent and manage crises by understanding the underlying causes of challenging behavior and implementing person-centered approaches to promote positive behavior. So again, the DOE is reviewing and making recommendations regarding that training. So we'll just have to keep an eye on what their recommendations are going to be as a result of that. The last one, 5223, absences for religious instruction. We already have that students may be released for up to 120 minutes a week for religious instruction. What we, you will have to consider is, do you want the schools to award, the high school to award up to two elective credits? If certain conditions are met, one, conduct an expanded history, criminal history check for those in direct contact with students. So those providing that 120 minutes of instruction a week would have to be subject to the expanded criminal history check. And two, you would have to adopt a policy awarding, allowing the awarding of those two credits. So that's something for you to consider. So that, those are the policies to be thinking about. There are several other policies that we will need to consider in the near future as well. But that's just to start on them.
And we'd handle this just like we do other, how we've handled policy changes in the past. You'll bring us a, a proposed change.
I will. Yeah, there's just going to be a ton of them this time, more than normal.
So this is an overview, certainly not any specifics.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a heads up right now.
How much of a heads up is there? I mean, is this something the next four, four months, six months, eight months?
We're going to have to do it quicker than that. That's why I'm trying to. We're going to have to condense it, yeah, our timeline.
Okay.
Thank you for keeping ahead of this. I know it's, it is a big job to deal with policies and, and we do a really, I really appreciate you keeping us, you know, pointed north in this and, and keeping us in alignment.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Not, our next, our work session will be August 4th and our next board meeting will be August 18th. And we're adjourned, everyone.